Okay, this is the meeting of the Fall River Planning Board, November 9th, 2025, 30 p.m. And we're going to be the open meeting law pursuant to the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And we will have a roll call. Elizabeth Undere?
Present.
Mario?
Here.
John Ferreira?
Here.
I'm Cynthia Savicki. Gloria Pacheco is absent at this meeting. We have William Kenny as the city planner, Patty Aguirre as the recording clerk, and Gary Lee, Fall River Government TV. And on item number one, we have a few things on item number one. It's Form C's definitive subdivision file number 2211. This has been tabled from the October 19th, 2020 meeting, and I understand that it will be tabled again?
Yes, the request from the proponents of this subdivision plan have asked us to table it to our next meeting, which is November, what, Patty?
December.
December. Oh, it's November now?
Oh, gosh.
What happened?
I'd hang out.
So the next meeting will be December, what?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So they'd like to table this to December 14th at 5:30 p.m., perhaps in this room. If not, there'll be an ad, I suppose, in the Herald News and the proper posting that'll show that we're doing something different. But we'll see how the pandemic situation going. Along with that, items one, two, and three are all related to that subdivision plan, and the proponents have asked that we table those along with the item zero, one, all to be discussed at the December meeting, if that's agreeable to the board.
All agreeable?
Motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to table?
Make a motion on table?
One, two, and three.
Second?
Second?
I'll second it.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Okay, and item number four. Can't talk too well with that. It's a repetitive petition. The owner applicant is Lycos Properties LLC, location of 388 Rhode Island Avenue. Assess this map number E-8-3. Okay, and request is submitted by Zitec on behalf of Lycos Properties LLC under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 16, and under Section 86-487 of the zoning bylaws with a request to a variance request, which was denied by the zoning board of appeals on September 17th, 2020, to operate a blood plasma center, medical clinic, waiving requirements in the BL district. The current request is for determination by the planning board that the applicant's new proposal to increase the square footage from 10,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet to operate a much larger blood plasma center at the property location that shall consist of highly controlled, sterile environmental staff by 40 to 70 employees who will oversee the plasma donations that will be used by the proposed tenant. BioLife reflects specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the denial was issued and consent of the planning board to allow a new hearing by the zoning board of appeals prior to the expiration of two years after the date of denial. Okay, and so Bill, do you want to take it from here?
Sure, I think we have Attorney Peter Salino here to speak on behalf of the owner applicant.
And the owner applicant is here as well.
Okay.
Good evening. For purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I'm a lawyer in Fall River, maintaining an address at 550 Locust Street. I represented the petitioner before the zoning board of appeals at the September 17th meeting. With me tonight is Ari, who is the manager of the property.
Who is his last name?
Ari Kapatos.
Kapatos.
Spell that for me.
K.A.P.P.A.T.O.S.
Thank you.
So for background, the subject property is the former Ocean State Job Lot location on Rhode Island Avenue. The building that we're proposing to put the plasma center in is the former Ocean State Job Lot property. It has been vacant for, what, about two years, give or take? Approximately two years it's been vacant. Also, for everyone's edification and situation in your mind, this plaza has a Walgreens, a gym, chiropractor, Domino's Pizza, karate studio, a variety of other uses. So it has plentiful parking. It comes out on one side on America Street, one side on Tucker Street, and one side on Rhode Island Avenue. The proposal before you, or the request for the repetitive petition, is as a result of a different tenant and a much larger operation than we proposed previously to the zoning board of appeals. More specifically, at the zoning board of appeals meeting in September, we talked about a roughly 10,000-square-foot center, which would take up less than half of the vacant space. The hours of operation were more truncated than the current proposal, and the number of staff members and people that we could serve was also different. So I had to do a lot of research for the zoning board of appeals, so if you'll just indulge me about what plasma is, because it's tough to understand what this is all about. So effectively, they use this scientific process called plasma foresis, through which donors go in, their blood is drawn out by a machine that separates the blood plasma from the other blood material. That plasma is used for medications, usually immunology-type medications. The sites are sterile, it's FDA-regulated, the products are all taken, or the samples are taken off-site to centers and facilities where they're processed into medicine. So the current proposal here is, keeping in mind that our focus should be the highest and best use of property, is that a plaza with an anchor tenant that is empty is certainly, in my view, not the highest or best use of the property. We lost on a three-to-two, I'm sorry, we lost, we had two nays, three ayes at the zoning board meeting, and one of the things that was brought up was, we have a medical overlay district. And we certainly understand that, but Mr. Kapatos's building is not in that district, and we think this use is perfectly viable. So we're here because we think we deserve another bite at the apple. We have a different tenant, we have 5,000 more square feet, we have good-paying jobs for people in Fall River, and we think we should have a chance to be heard again. And with that, I'll take any questions that members of the board may have operationally. Mr. Kapatos is here to speak to the day-to-day as well.
Could I just ask a question to clarify?
Sure.
So the, on the first proposal, you had 10,000 square feet?
That's correct.
And now it's up to 15,000?
That is correct, Mr. Kenny. It's an additional 5,000 square feet, which, for the record, is more than half of the empty space that's there.
Okay, and the hours of operation will be expanded, the number of staff will be expanded, the number of clients that you can serve will be expanded, all those are true?
That is correct, yes.
So the scale of this is much bigger?
The scale is much bigger than what it was before, and what we've discovered is there's a ton of interest in this on a national level, and the tenants seem to be, well, the calls that he's gotten for this type of use are interesting. Companies from California, so.
Was the reason it was rejected because it was too small?
No, and that's a fair question. I really don't know what the reason was. We didn't get a clear vote. It just, I felt like the discussion prior to the motion to deny was going well. We were sitting in these seats almost, and then it was a motion to deny. So I don't know, I know there was definitely a mention made by the chairman of the fact that there was a medical overlay district, and that would be perfectly fine to run this kind of operation. And one of my positions on this whole thing is, on Tucker Street, there's a Walgreens. If you go in and get a flu shot, that's a needle, and there's some blood involved in that. How's that different than getting your blood drawn next door in the same parking lot? There's a dentist on Tucker Street, there's a chiropractor, so I don't think it's fair to say that in Fall River, medical uses are strictly in the overlay districts, because while that's true of primary care and some of the bigger operations, throughout the city, there are offices tucked into neighborhoods.
Could I, if Chair, Madam Chair, if I could just take off the mask for a minute and expand on that a little bit? Again, I can't read the minds of the members of the zoning board of appeals, but I believe some of the discussion was sort of heading in the direction that, since we have a medical overlay district, that's where we should really almost force medical-related operations to locate. And the medical overlay district is not intended to be an exclusive location for medical-related functions to take place. For some functions, it creates the possibility of some good synergy between the uses. For example, if you're an orthopedic surgeon, you might like to have an x-ray tech next door in the same building or in the same complex. But there, you know, and that's good, the overlay district makes it possible for the orthopedic surgeon to go out and suggest to an x-ray tech that he or she move in, and they won't need a variance, it's already provided for by the overlay. But it's not intended to be exclusive. That doesn't really apply to this plasma place. They don't, they're not a similar sort of operation, they're not in the same relationship as, say, an orthopedic surgeon and x-ray tech would be. The plasma operation is taking, you know, people off the street to make a donation of plasma and then to leave. And is that correct, Mr. Salino?
Yeah, and just on the off the street?
Just in case that scares anyone.
I don't mean it in the sense that we usually say, "off the street."
I mean, there's a physical that happens, so it's not just people off the street. People are paid for their donation.
Poor choice of words.
I just don't want to alarm everybody. People are paid, the samples, you can do two per seven days, per seven-day window.
Yeah, go ahead. And one thing I do want to mention regarding location, just to piggyback off what you said, I've visited a few locations from BioLife and Griffles and a few of the plasma companies that have reached out to me, and most of them are located in more of like a strip mall, retail-type centers as opposed to in a specifically medical district. They seem to be integrated with these other retail tenants in that type of a setting, so.
I have a question next. Is this the only one we in, will be in Fall River?
This would be the only one, yes. I think East Providence is the nearest one.
Yeah, I think this would actually be one of the first ones in Massachusetts.
Okay. Yeah, I know at one time, Mario, when they were speaking with Ari, they have a location in East Providence, and they were looking to come this way. And there was one in Connecticut, I think in Hartford.
I think they have a few in Providence, like East Providence, yeah.
Okay.
As far as the medical professional or whatever you are, what do you say the occupants of the department, if it comes through, how many people would you employ in that?
It's roughly between 40 to 70 employees.
Yeah, the literature they've given us and the stuff that I provided to Mr. Kenny says 40 to 70.
And they're all high-paying jobs with benefits, so it's, in my opinion, you know, definitely beneficial.
Okay, your distribution to research, of course, it's all medical, I don't understand it, but.
Right.
It's very interesting. Is that strictly Massachusetts, or you'll be local, or you'll be a nationwide?
So the tenant is a nationwide company?
Yeah.
Mr. Kapatos owns the plaza, so he's not the tenant?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So he's, Lycos Properties LLC is his LLC that owns the plaza.
Okay.
And he purchased it last January, was it?
Yeah, like two years ago.
Two Januaries, January of 19.
But this is not the same company that came originally for the zoning there?
It is not. We, when we, in our initial filing, if you look at it, we spoke to a company called Griffles, okay? And the material that we've submitted for this larger proposal is Bio?
BioLife.
BioLife.
And they were not interested in resubmitting?
Griffles?
Yes.
I don't know if they were interested or not, but I think that would kind of thwart my argument that this was a different petition, right?
Yeah, there's been a lot of demand for blood plasma centers, especially, you know, with the pandemic, because a lot of the research, it benefits the coronavirus research for the vaccine, so a lot of the blood plasma is used in developing vaccines and medicine for things like this, so.
Planning Board members? Yes, John?
Now, obviously, the client is the, is the plasma medical clinic, and he is, he's the landlord of the, the owner of the plaza.
He's the client?
He's the client.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, was there any reason why they didn't go through a medical overlay? I mean, I'm just trying to read a little bit into zoning.
Yeah, I mean, basically, he found the tenant, and he doesn't have a building in medical overlay, is what it comes down to. So he would like to make use of this roughly 27,000-square-foot empty building, and is trying to-
No, I mean, I've got no problem with that.
Yeah, so he's-
I know the plaza, and I know it's empty, and I'd like to see it full as well.
Right. So really, it wasn't that, we didn't give consideration to it, it's just that he's the client, and he doesn't have a building in that district. So that's why we asked for the variance to allow the use, and then we get denied.
I mean, I think this, I think there's a substantial difference from the last time. Again, it's not our decision to make, it's a decision that's got to go to zoning, and I think that, personally, I think that they should get a shot, another shot at zoning and give it their best shot, and see, hopefully, fingers crossed, it goes through. So I make a motion that we send it back to zoning with a substantial difference in submission.
I'll second a motion.
Second, hold on in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed?
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good luck. Item number five, review of recommendation regarding proposed discontinuance of an unaccepted portion of so-called Center Street from South Beacon Street, Westerly, for a distance of 445.48 feet. Okay, and we have a letter from Bill to the planning board. Do you want me to read this whole letter, Bill, or you want to abbreviate it?
I can just abbreviate, that's really just for your background information, staff.
Bill, don't forget.
Yep, yep. Just again, to recap the procedure on this, the Walter A. Furman Company LLC submitted in August a request to the city council, asking the city council to release its rights, any rights or interest that the city might have in that portion of South, in that portion of Center Street, running from South Beacon, Westerly, for a distance of 445.48 feet. And the council, as per their usual procedure, referred that to the planning department so that I could present the issue to the planning board for you people to make a recommendation to the city. And in preparing my presentation for you folks, I spoke with the engineering department and also with the public utilities department, which is the department in charge of water and sewer issues. And the background of this property is, and I believe I sent you all a copy of the subdivision plan, so that you would have an idea what it looks like on the ground. The petitioner, the Furman Company, owns the real estate to the northerly side of that Paper Street. And Center Street, by the way, is a Paper Street, it does not exist on the ground. They own the land to the northerly side, and they most recently, very recently, purchased a strip of land on the southerly side, which is shown on that subdivision plan. Having now acquired both sides of the street, the presumption is that they have some rights to the street, which, you know, the details of which I would leave up to the, to the law department if we have to have that discussion. But the interesting thing about this request is that, as you go along the Center Street, Paper Street, in the westerly direction, looking on that plan, as I noted in my report to you, you'll see two notations that have to do with conveyances of properties to the city of Fall River. So at the westerly end of Center Street, both on the southerly side and the northerly side, there's a notation that the parcels have been conveyed by Jamie Duff to the city of Fall River. And there's a background to that. I can't remember the exact dates, but it's been a couple of years ago when areas, some parcels in this area were, were being developed, and the water department and the sewer department, and to some extent, engineering, talked with the developer and said, "Look, we're going to allow you to develop some parcels along Bay Street, along Sprague Street, perhaps some other locations, but this backland is the location of a wetland stream and a system that runs all the way from Cook Pond to the Taunton River." And it's an environmentally sensitive area, it's an area that the public utilities department wants to keep an eye on for flood control and stormwater control. It's an area where there has been some talk of establishing maybe a walking trail for folks to enjoy, an area for students to look at environmental issues, to study them. And so the, the question comes up, should the city release all of its rights in Center Street if doing that would make it difficult or impossible for them to access this portion of the backlands, if they wanted it for public use, or if they needed to get at it for environmental or flood control or drainage issues? Center Street, on the other side of that wetland area, is a Paper Street as well, and it begins at Bay Street, and a portion of that was previously released, the interests of the city in that Paper Street were previously released, and the Department of Public Utilities felt that, you know, that was really where they wanted to draw the line, they didn't want to release the entire interest of the city in any other portions of Center Street. So you have to sort of balance that interest that the public has with the interest of the petitioner. And I think that representative of the petitioner is here, and we'll certainly give him an opportunity to speak if it's the board's inclination to do so, but my recommendation that I would propose to you, for you to report back to the city council, would be that rather than releasing all of the city's right, title, and interest in and to Center Street, that it might be reasonable for the city to release some of its rights to accommodate the petitioner, and in that way, not preclude the city's future access or future use of the backland. Community utilities suggested that maybe the city could retain any rights it might have, but then issue some kind of a revocable license to the abuser, to use that portion of the street for purposes that would be consistent with the present and potential future uses and access by the city and the general public. So in a nutshell, I summarize my recommendations in two points, and the board can consider these, and if you're inclined to do so, adopt them, and then we can arrange to report it back to the city council. But point one, the city council should not adopt the proposed order to release all of its rights in this portion of Center Street. But point two, the city council should refer this matter to the corporation council with instructions to work with Walter A. Furman Company and the entity that owns their real estate, which is New 180 Liberty Street LLC, to work with them and the community utilities department to see if some kind of a revocable license or other agreement could be put together that would accommodate the petitioner's needs, but also protecting at the same time the city's potential future access needs and other interests and the public interest. So that's, that's where I come down on it. If, again, if the board is inclined to do so, they could entertain comments from the representative from the Walter Furman Company. That's my report to you.
Sir, would you like to speak?
Sure. Should I come down?
Yes, please. If you sit right there, you'd be picked up by the mic.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jason Rosati. I'm the CFO of the Walter A. Furman Company. We're a woodworking millwork company that's been in business since 1954 in the city. Employ anywhere from 75 to 100 people at any one given time. Back in 2015, we had a very large expansion. We increased the size of our facility from 35,000 square feet to 60,000 square feet, actually about 65,000 square feet. And at the time, you know, the parking was fine. So I just mentioned that because it's something that we might want to talk about a little bit more. If you look at, I don't know if Bill gave you guys the plan?
Yeah, we gave the copies of the form A.
But we recently purchased a strip of land adjacent to Center Street from Jamie Duff, and we did that primarily to use as a buffer, because he was planning a townhouse development of some sort very close by. And we basically wanted to just create a buffer there to plant trees and just basically avoid any future complaints, because in the area, I mean, there is a lot of residential in our area. You know, we were completely industrial-zoned years ago, but I think it changed to commercial mill district at some point in time, which allows townhouses and other things to be built. So like I said, we bought that strip, strip of land from, from Jamie, and now I've recently submitted this request to discontinue 445 feet of Center Street. One major potential situation could be parking. We, back in 2015, we had sufficient parking, but we're actually parking right on that strip of land now, some of our employees are parking there. So we're just trying to potentially use that as a way to, you know, create parking spots on Center Street, basically, because they're already parking there now. So.
Can you tell me?
That's basically what I have to say.
Members? Yes, John?
Is your, your place of operation, is it there now? I know there's a big brick mill.
Yeah.
Are you off to the side there?
Yeah, so-
Depending on Sprague, I think it's on the left, I tried to find, tried going in there.
Yeah, so if this is South Beacon Street?
Yeah.
Liberty Street's right here, and our facility is right in this whole space here.
Okay. So if I'm coming down Sprague, Sprague, get to the left.
Yeah, if you come down Sprague, we're to the left.
And then I can come out on the other side.
You go down Sprague, and then Liberty Street connects with, with Sprague?
Yep.
Just before Bay Street?
Correct.
And you take the left, and it's our parking lot right there.
Okay, so that, that is your, I tried, I went by a couple of times just to make sure, to see exactly where it was. I mean, hearing from Mr. Kenny, I mean, you know, I don't know what the board members, you know, want to decide. Personally, I think that, I think that we should, that we should refer this to corporate counsel, just to get a legal basis on both sides, so that he's protected, we can come up with some kind of agreement legally with the city, and this way, both parties are satisfied. I don't want to say no, I want to leave the door open, and I think between yourself and corporate counsel, I think we could find some, some remedy, like Bill said, there's probably, you know, a partial, you know, conveyance, and, you know, just to see what we come up with, because this does have to go back to city council. City council is not going to be-
Yeah, our position, yeah, we have to submit, rather than us sending it to corporate counsel, we, our, our role is to send it back to the city council with our recommendation as to what they should do.
Okay, that would, not knowing what the rest of the board favors, but that, that would be my, my intent. I don't want to say no, I don't want to, you know, put the kibosh on this, but I, that would be mine. This way, gives both parties still the chance to come up with some kind of agreement to satisfy himself as well.
And if I may say, Madam Chair, I think that it's important to try and accommodate the Furman Company, and, but again, there may be situations where the city needs to get back there for work on that wetland for drainage or other reasons, and there may be some situations in the future where they want to have it accessible- where they want to have it accessible for the public enjoyment. But I think both things can be done. I think we can accommodate the abutter here as well as preserve the city's options for the future. And that's why I made the recommendation that I made.
Yes.
Through the JR. Bill, I read this more than once, I looked the geoplanet, whatever, but I really don't fully understand. So therefore, I have to agree with Mr. Farora that I would like to have more information. We're not, I'm not saying no, okay? I would like to have, as you mentioned, with the Corporate Counsel, see what the benefits could be for you and also for the city. We want to make the right decision. So if we could get that, maybe.
Again, we can't really make the recommendation to the Corporate Counsel ourselves.
Correct, correct.
To the City Council.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
So I just a suggestion, maybe if we show table for the next meeting, we can get that information?
No, we have to report back to the City Council just to tell them what we recommend. And their basic question was, should we, do we agree with the possibility of a City Council vote releasing all of the city's rights to the abutter? And my recommendation is on that point, no. We should recommend against releasing all of the city's rights. But point two would be, we recommend to the City Council that they refer it to Corporate Counsel to work with the abutter, to come up with some sort of a revocable license or use agreement where they would get the benefit of using this area, but the city would still retain the right, if need be, in the future to access over here or to, you know, get vehicles over there to the backland and so forth.
If we needed to continue to use that for parking, to comply with the city's order, where they don't really want our employees parking on the street because it takes parking spaces from the residents, you know, but like right now, we've been parking there. Where are all these people supposed to park if it was to be used as some sort of throughway?
Well, again, that's the issue, isn't it? And the city, I don't think the city should just abandon the option that it now has to get back into that publicly owned land in the back. And yet, the city should do what it can to accommodate your parking needs. And there may be other options in the future. Part of this property to the south of the strip that you just bought, we're not sure what's going to happen with that, but one proposal was that part of that would also be sold to the city, and voila, you have the possibility of some parking back there. So the jury's not out yet on what's going to happen in this neighborhood, but it's our obligation on the public side to preserve the public's options and try, if we can, to accommodate you as well.
I think if the city retains some of its rights to the property, I don't think parking would be the issue at hand. I think it would be developing over that land that, I think that would be more of an issue. But then again, that's also legal.
No, you make a good point. If we release all of our public interest, he could build whatever he wants to on that land, subject to zoning.
Right, so if we kind of, you know, maintain some kind of agreement between them, I mean, he could still use it for his parking without a problem. It's just, once we relinquish all of it, then it's going to get developed, and we've got no way to get back there. But that's between Counsel and the Furman.
Good point.
Any further discussion on this?
I make a motion that we refer this back to the City Council with a recommendation that it goes to the Corporate Counsel for review and to kind of work out some kind of agreement with the Furman Company as to what the best use is for both sides, to accommodate both sides.
I have a motion.
I make a motion on what he has requested to send right now to.
He's on a second.
Yeah, we got a motion.
We need a second.
Oh, you need a second, okay.
Yes, I'll second.
She's second.
That's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one.
Thank you.
Phil, this is another one I don't have a copy of. Item number six.
I didn't send that to you, okay.
Adoption.
I didn't send it to you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Adoption of fourth letter amendment to irrevocable letter of credit for Highland Woods subdivision.
Can you still breathe?
That sounds familiar.
It's when you talk, it, yes. Okay, Bill, I'm going to have to refer this to you. I didn't get a copy of that.
My mistake, I'm sorry. The background to this is this. We're talking here about the letter of credit that secures the promise of the developers of Highland Woods subdivision to complete all of the roadway improvements and other items that are required in the approved Form C subdivision plan. And the letter of credit securing their obligations was first issued, let me see if I can tell you when, yeah, first was a million dollars. We held a letter of credit that entitled us to charge against their account a million dollars if they failed to complete their work. And over a period of time, it appears that a lot of the work was completed to the satisfaction of the board, and the amount of the credit was reduced to 485,000, and then later on, it was reduced to 225,000 pursuant to the third amendment to this letter of credit. And then, when nobody was looking, the letter of credit expired, and yet, the work has not yet been completed, okay? So it was an inadvertent expiration, I suppose that's the best way to describe it. The, when I discovered that, what I had done is asked the developers to have their bank issue a new letter of credit for the $225,000 amount and to extend the agreement under the letter of credit to May of 2021. So that date is selected because, given the state of completion of the work up there, that will probably, it'll probably all be done by then. So there'd be no need for the letter of credit to still be outstanding, although if necessary, we could get it extended again. So the bank has sent me a proposed letter of credit for the 225 to put this back, to reinstitute this performance guarantee. I reviewed it, and it's in proper form. And Betty Ann Mullins at the Bay Coast Bank has signed it, and we are asking tonight for your agreement to accept this amended letter of credit as the performance guarantee for Highland Woods subdivision. And if you vote to accept it, there are two documents to sign. One of them is a standard form that the planning board has been using for many, many years that just recites that the letter has been submitted, that the board accepts it as the performance guarantee for the work to be done. And we have you sign that, and then we also get signature on the letter of credit itself, which gets deposited with the Treasurer's Office in the City Hall. So, long way of saying, we need an updated letter of credit.
Board members have any questions on this? No? Okay. And do we have a motion to adopt the fourth letter amendment to a revocable letter of credit for Highland Woods subdivision?
I make the motion.
Second? Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll have that fleet assigned before we leave tonight, so don't anybody disappear.
Okay. We will stay here.
Thank you.
All night. Okay, and now, we have Form A applications for endorsement of plans believed not to require approval. And the first is file number 20-1481. Owner applicant, Jeffrey Doxy. Location, 390, 379 Mount Hope Avenue. Assessors map, A-9, lot 28.
Okay, members of the board, I've reviewed this application, and there was a variance granted by the zoning board of appeals to make this division of this land into two The resulting parcels will both have frontage on a public way, one of them on Mount Hope Avenue, the other one on Woodard Street. And therefore, I recommend that the chair be directed to endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any questions? No? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. We are on the number seven, is that correct?
Number seven A, file number 20-1481.
File, I'm going to approve it. Number, the file 201481. Make motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one. Approved? Okay, and we also have file number 20-1482. Owner applicant is Michael T. and Cynthia S. Pudo. Location, 104 Fifth Street. Assessors map, N-20, lot 28.
Okay, members of the board, this involves a typical Fall River situation where there were two houses on one lot, both of which have existed since 1954. And under our ordinances, under our zoning bylaw, the zoning board of appeals looked at this and determined that this division was acceptable because of the presence of existing residential structures on the lot continuously since 1954. So they allowed a variance for this division. As you know, that's not the end of the story because, just because it complies with zoning, does not mean that it meets the subdivision control law standards. But looking at this parcel, we find that the resulting two parcels will both have frontage on Fifth Street. And Fifth Street is a public way. And given all that, I recommend that the board direct the chair to endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any discussion? Yes, John?
I did go by this property. I think everybody knows how I stand with subdividing. I think this is a perfect example of how I kind of hope subdividing properties would become. I will voice my concerns a couple more down the road, down the line. But I make a motion that we approve this one.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No one. And now we have 7C, which is file number 20-1483. The owner applicant is Sunwood Condominium Association. Location, 950 to 980 Wilson Road. Assessors map, Z-4, lot 25.
Okay, members of the board, if you'll take a look at this plan, you'll see, I guess, a little bit above where the words Wilson Road appear, there's a designation of parcel one. And fronting on Wilson Road in that vicinity, you see little dotted lines with the word driveway. What happened here apparently is that when the original plans were drawn up, there was an encroachment. Part of that driveway encroached from the parcel that's shown as Z4110 over onto Z425. So the purpose of this conveyance is, in a sense, to help out that existing single-family house, 990 Wilson Road, because as it stands today, before this plan is approved, if it is approved, part of that single-family home's driveway is actually on the land that owns, that belongs to, that's owned by that condominium project. So by creating parcel one, they're really selling a strip of the condominium land to the single-family dwelling to assist in resolving the encroachment issue. So based on that, the frontages are on a public way. They're actually increasing the size of the single-family dwelling lot. It complies with frontage requirements, and I would recommend that the board direct the chair to endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Any discussion? Yes, John?
Again, this one here is a no-brainer. I'm just glad that instead of litigation, that two property owners came to a good agreement to resolve this issue, because we know that litigation is generally the route that everybody takes. But I'm just glad to see that two property owners worked out a situation that was amicable for both. So I make a motion that we approve.
A second.
And second is, yeah. And so now we are down to 7D, which is file number 20-1484. Owner applicant, A.F.R. Incorporated. Location, 607 South Main Street. Assessors map, K5, lot 2.
Okay, members of the board, the notation on the proposed plan states that the intent of this plan is to resolve an error or encroachment incorrectly shown on a plan recorded in Plan Book 116, page 80. And I took a look at Plan Book 116, page 80, and compared it to the new plan. And what they're trying to do here is restate the boundary lines between these parcels to, again, correct an encroachment situation. If you look at the proposed plan, existing, where it says existing building number 607, above that, you'll see some dotted lines or some dashed lines. That shows the existing lot line which encroaches onto that building, which is a situation that should not be allowed to continue. And so they want to erase that dotted line and create a new property line between these parcels so that there be no longer any encroachment. A correction like this is of benefit to both landowners. It leaves a very small frontage for one of these lots, but they do have the benefit of a variance that was granted to do this. And so, again, as we know, just because they have a variance doesn't mean that all of the issues for subdivision control are satisfied. But in this case, it does remove that problem with the very small frontage that one of these lots would be remain, would have left at the end of the day. So I would recommend that, again, that the board direct the chair to endorse this plan approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Yes, John?
Okay, this is one that I've put my input in whenever it arises. I know it's approval not required, but my input certainly is. This is what I don't, this is what really gets me. This property in the back, the lot line's going to go right across that first step of that house. Then there's going to be four foot, a four-foot access to that property. EMTs, first responders, I want, because that's a block wall, that line to the right, that's a block building. That runs all the way through there. So it's not like an open yard where they can just walk through. So you're going to have full, I don't know what they're going to do in that lot. It's not, you know, again, it's an A&R, approval not required, but my input is. And this is, you know, how does a Form A lot have four foot of frontage? That's, this is what really gets me. And people say, well, that's the way it is. Yeah, it is. It's the law. But where does the water and sewer lines run through here? Do they run right through that land? If they run through the land, that's fine, he's got an easement. What if they put a foundation in there? He's got an easement underneath this foundation. If the sewer line breaks, he's going to go in the neighbor's yard. If the sewer line breaks, he's going to go in a neighbor's yard. Jackhammer is, is foundation, is flora. I mean, this is the stuff that really, the others were fine, not a problem. It's stuff like this, we had one last month, and I'm sure we're going to have some more. But again, it's approval not required, but my input certainly was.
And thank you, John, because we keep bringing this to our attention because this Any more discussion on this?
I suppose the only good news is that if, if this is endorsed approval not required, at least the situation's better than it was. But I understand John's issue.
I do, too.
Unfortunately, I don't think we have any control over it in view of the fact that the variance has been granted.
That's the frustrating part, because we could all deny it right now, and it's still going to go in 21 days, so...
No, I agree with John, because I, you know, show me what area was going to be in there, that four feet, just, that's not really fully acceptable, but we don't have any choice through the chair.
Correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve file 20184.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
You're opposing?
Yeah.
And item number eight is the approval of the minutes of our October 19th, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes in the meeting from October 19th.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There'll be no need for public input this evening, and so, motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry?
Motion to adjourn? You don't want to adjourn?
Yeah, just take a round till next month.
I apologize to you, but I'm going here.
You don't want to adjourn?
Yes, yes. So, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
What was it, is it?
Okay.